At six o'clock, let's start with the pledge. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we start on our agenda tonight, I'd just like to make a real brief comment about the fact that a couple of weeks ago, we lost a really, really good public servant in Jack Parliament. Jack was a very dedicated person to the city of Brandon. He served on the city council. And I can personally testify to the fact that he was one heck of a good softball coach. My team played against him with very, very little success. So anyway, I just think it makes sense to remember Jack and all the good things that he's done for our city. Okay, let's start with the roll call.
Clark, Fish, Johnson, Jorgensen, Cole, Steen, Mayor Buck.
Here. And we have the agenda in front of you. There's a full agenda. So I'll look for a motion on the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. We have the minutes from the October 13 briefing meeting and the October 17 regular meeting. Motion and second to approve those minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Approval of claims on page sixteen through eighteen. They all had a chance to take a look at them.
In a second.
Motion and second to approve the claims. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. We have the consent calendar, including A through D. And once again, we've had a chance to look it up. Motion and second to approve the consent calendar. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Visitors and timed items. This is an opportunity for anyone that would like to talk to the to the council to step forward. We ask that that you limit your comments to a maximum of five minutes. And if you're here to discuss one of the public hearing things that are on the agenda, likely be the best to wait until then to discuss if you have something other than that. Or anything, you're welcome to step up and let the council hear. Seeing none, we'll move on to, excuse me. Your name and address.
I'm Riley McEwen. I'm a resident of 913 South Parkview Boulevard and Ward One. So a couple of weeks ago, I noticed in the paper that there was talk about the lights in the tennis courts at the middle school. And I figured I'd say a few things because these lights are quite useful to us. Especially early in the season, the boys tennis team practices from three sometimes until six and it gets dark at like five. And so not having those lights would cut our season practices short quite a bit. Another thing that the lights are useful for is when just people that want to get better at the game, season or not, go out. Such as I know me and my friends have used them from time to time and one of them doesn't even know how to play. So we're very grateful that the city, in conjunction with the school, provides the tennis lights. And you know, it's a pretty good thing for us to be doing it. It adds some positivity to our lives, especially in the spring. That is what I'd like to say.
Okay, thank you Riley.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. This is an issue that's going to be under discussion for next spring. Public hearing. I'd like to have Patrick maybe brief us on each of these ten items. And then we can open it up to public comments.
So.
No, just do them one at a time.
Yep. For all the new people in attendance, I'm Patrick. I am your development director. So most of you probably will or have received a letter in the mail from me regarding the the conditional use that would occur on the site should it be rezoned. So you probably, if you have not already, there will be a letter in the mail. Feel free to reach out with any thoughts, comments. Or even if it's about that or anything, if you want to talk about planning and zoning here in town, feel free to reach out. So the first public hearing on the agenda is ordinance 665 to rezone the tract of land described here from NRC to R3. So much like with the other rezones that have come across, the thing to look at is is what, where the land is, what it is, is that sufficient? Does it make sense to rezone it from one zone to another? What's especially important are the list of permitted uses, but more so than the conditional, because conditional you can add things on. But does it make sense for what's on the permitted list to exist where it is given where the property is? And that's a very site-specific look. So ordinance number 666, we are constantly looking at ways to make zoning regulations work, not only for development, but for residents. One thing that we come across is parking is a complicated issue. You want to have enough, but no one also wants to look at a sea of parking that just sits used 10% and then just sits the rest of the time. What could we better use that land for? The first parking-related one on the agenda is the discussion of cooperative parking. Cooperative parking is if you have two or more principal land uses located on lots next to each other. There is a way to take a look at those and if they can come to some shared parking arrangement to reduce the the minimum parking space requirements. So it's a way to save parking. The next one, 667, amends the fence regulations. This amends three parts of the fence regulations. The first one is the NRC district is not currently addressed, so this adds regulations to the NRC district. If the lot is used as a residence, treat it like a residence. If it's used as for a commercial purpose, treat it like a commercial purpose for your fence. The next part is section J. There are privately owned sport areas outside of people's homes. This takes into account the fence needs of those uses. So this adds regulations for those, a maximum height of 12 feet, a maximum of 10% solid excluding wind and fabric screens. If it goes up above the six feet required for residential district, the setback is one half its height from there. And then we amended the, this proposes to amend the definition of fence to include the fence materials that are allowed in the fences section. It just syncs up the definition with what the regulations do. Next up is 668. So in the heavy industrial district, the ordinance used to read that the required rear yard setback was 10 feet. Then it added, if for some reason heavy industrial was next to residential, it increased the setback a whole lot. So somewhere along the lines in an amendment, we changed the base of that to 25, so that would make the exception not make sense. So this is just looking to make it work how it did. So the next one is off-street parking for individually planted lots surrounded by a commonly-owned space. So this is a recent addition to the zoning ordinance and we are simply going back and adding rules to that to make it useful. Here, that would would say rather than having to have your parking requirements on your lot, that they could, if they came to an agreement, they could put all, each of those lots, parking requirements in the commonly-owned space. Then of course, next, we need to address signs for those since your amount of signage is based on your street frontage. If you are an individually-planted lot surrounded by commonly-owned space, your individually-planted lot would not have street frontage, so you would have no signs. So this establishes some sign regulations for those lots. Then 671 talks about the definition of parking pad. This is designed to reflect P&amp;Z's intention that a parking pad has a pathway up to it. If the parking pad is required to be paved, then the access to it is required to be paved. It's not a situation where someone drives across their lawn then parks on the parking pad. 672 is allowing for private sewer systems in town. So the issue with expanding the city is there's, of course, a lot of land outside the city. The problem is it's often difficult to provide services to that land. What is easily serviceable tends to be used up real fast and then what's left is what's left. There are a lot of properties where it is currently, the city is currently unable to provide sewer service to those properties. So, and the county has a rule where you can develop one house or dwelling per quarter, quarter section. They generally don't allow the rural subdivisions like you'll see around Sioux Falls. Then the problem comes from those people outside of the city or in certain areas want to be annexed into the city, but then the city cannot provide them with sewer service. So this provides a way for them to have either septic tanks or holding tanks depending on the size of their lot. And the last of the parking is 673. It works somewhat like the cooperative parking, except this involves two or more uses on the same lot. If they have different peak hours of operation, rather than, say you have a church and a daycare, right now, the ordinance would require you to look at your minimum required spots for the church and for the daycare, and then you add them up and you get your total. This would allow P&amp;Z to take a look and say, the church would require more and they're not going to overlap. The daycare will be during the week, the church on the weekend. So we'll just choose the one that's the highest, so you don't have to add them up anymore. So it'll save some parking spots. So those are your proposed amendments.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, this is a first reading on N through nine. That means that basically nothing will be approved tonight, other than moving on.
Yes, it'll be the first reading on all of those proposed and as we all know, the second reading would take place at a future council meeting for final adoption.
Okay. We'll do a public hearing for number one. Do we have some people that would like to address that?
Check. First of all, I can't believe, is it Steve Rubin, 512 North Oak Ridge Road. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
First of all, I can't believe that we've gotten this far with this project. I'm here to give you some insight on safety and hardships that this proposed project that they want to do on ordinance 665. I've sat in your seat before and when whatever thing, anything, something came to me, the first thing was safety. Safety for the citizens of Brandon. And what we've got proposed here on ordinance 665, whether it's an R3, an R2, or an R1, should not happen. One more car on Redwood Boulevard is one too many for safety. When those duplexes were built from Split Rock to, I guess would be North Oak Ridge Road, basically two and a half blocks is what we've got. There are 27 addresses. There is no other spot like that in the city of Brandon. Matter of fact, I don't think I've ever seen a spot like that in the city of Sioux Falls. When those were built, did I have to change my driving habits? Absolutely. I had to change them. I had to be more of a defensive driver. When you're leaving and going west on Redwood, you had to be careful because those people that live in those duplexes, their driveway is the street. The kids' playground is the street. Have I had to hit my brakes? Yes. How many times? Many. More than 20 or 30? I'd say yes. I was taking a picture on Saturday of the trucks when there's a big truck parked at either end. You cannot, when they back out, they can't see traffic coming from the east. Can't, you can't see it. And a little girl ran out in front of me with her dad playing basketball. I wish I'd had my video on. We could have played it here and you can see what I'm talking about. When they started building those duplexes, they were into phase number one. I believe there was three or four phases with that. And I'm surprised that the planning and zoning did not do their research and go and find out, is this a safety concern? Why is the speed limit on Redwood 25 miles an hour? I believe, Councilman Cole, you might have been here the time, when the parents came to this body and said, "We want our speed limit lowered for the safety of our children." If anybody's paid attention to that, they'd see that from Split Rock to Hidden Valley Golf Course is 25 miles an hour. If you go west on Redwood, it's 30 miles an hour. Their proposal at the time is they wanted it lowered to 20. Police department said, "Hey, let's leave it at 25 because it's confused some of the officers." So that alone is, that's a safety concern and that's a hardship concern. Now let's, that's just one thing. That's red flag number one. Safety of the citizens should be number one on everybody's list. Number two is that drainage canal. That's right behind them. When that was put in, there was never a thought that there was going to be apartments or whatever built down on the end of Redwood. When it rains, we've all noticed, and if you have ever driven by there in a rainstorm, it's a river, is what it is. If you notice, there's no skateboard signs there. Why are they there? When that was built, the kids would rather skateboard down the drainage canal, the drainage ditch, than the skateboard park. So we had to put signs. Then they use it for a bike path. Now, somebody that wants to come in and do an R3 and put, I guess I'm reading here now, 200 and some apartments, would want to build them next to a drainage ditch that's a river. I, that just, I really can't unfathom that. I mean, to me, that is not taking the interest in the safety of the citizens of Brandon. Let's think of the perfect storm. What about our floods? What about Split Rock Creek? I've dealt with the floods, many of them. Every six years, we get a major flood. I've lived on North Oak Ridge for 30 years. I've built my house there. My kids were born and raised there, graduated from college, moved back to Brandon, and they all live here. They all work here in Brandon. And do what I want, their kids running around down there by that drainage ditch in a perfect storm? Absolutely not. No way. To come here, to want to build an apartment like what they want to build, the first thing they should have came back and said, "Let's put a storm sewer and cover it up." Did they do that? I don't know. I haven't, I don't know the plan. But I would have think that would have been on their minds, let's protect the citizens. That's what number, that's what your jobs are, is protect us. We shouldn't have to come here. This should have been stopped before it ever got here. So you get the perfect storm, you get the five-inch rain, you get the floods coming down Split Rock Creek. And now let's throw in the watershed from the new development. What is that going to do? My time's up, but I am not for this. I don't, I think one more car on Redwood is one too many. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I've been here for a long time. I don't know if this is the place for it, so.
We can't engage, Steve.
What's that?
We can't engage on these.
Okay, that's fine. But I am not, I'm not, I'm opposed against it.
Brett Carver, 905 North Freedom Circle. You know, I served on the council with Steve and everything he said is true. I want to point out a couple of different things from a different perspective. One is, my very last day on this council was the day that the township came to us and said, "You have to fix Redwood. It's a very dangerous street." And of course, we said, "Well, it's your road. You need to fix it." Then we said, "We'll annex you in and we'll fix the road." Because they had quotes to fix that road for $36,000. And at that time, our city engineer had already gotten quotes because of all the blue clay. That was going to be a 300 and some thousand dollar project. So I think all of us agree it's a dangerous road. I understand that there's things in the works to fix that road, to widen it, to make it better, safer, all wet to cedar, I believe. Fine. But that's not now. You know, I've seen the very same thing Steve's talking about. Those kids play out in the front and bring in more traffic. And there's, for a major collector, there's supposed to be 300 feet between any entrance or exit. And that just totally violated it. Well, that was a mistake of the past. We need to now make another one. That's that perspective. My other perspective is my house. And I brought pictures. I just built this $450,000 house two years ago. My back fence abuts that property. 163 feet of it. I'd have to show you, show you three pictures to get it all in. Now, I also understand from the letter that I got that he, his intention, granted, right now, it's only R3, so he'd have to get a condition to switch it to have more than 36 units, but it's fully his intention. They sent us a letter. I finally got this letter. If I would have known about this, I would have been at the planning and zoning. I didn't know because you didn't tell Freedom Circle and we all got houses that abut it. We don't drive by that road down there. So, and I haven't found it yet in the ordinance, but back when I was on the council, I'm pretty sure there was an ordinance that every abutting property needs to get notified. I was not. So I'm still dating. I also want to say this. Times change, things change. I spent time in real estate. Sometimes things get built behind the house when people never thought it would. But I also, having been a Realtor, understand there's a proper way to go about things. An R1 residential is residential. You don't build a three-story apartment complex in an already R1 residential. I realize that was natural conservative land, but to then bring in an R3 on top of a residential area? Ridiculous. Absolutely ridiculous. All those people that live in that area are going to have to deal with the traffic. They're going to have to deal with their property values going down. Mr. Mayor, you're a Realtor, you know that. What do you think's going to happen to my house? Really unhappy about this. And I will tell you this. 20 years in the Navy, I lived in multiple apartments, condos, all over the United States. Never once did I live in one where I looked down into someone's backyard from a three-story balcony. If you guys let this go through, you're going to make one point clear. That our belief that you are elected to represent us is not true. Make the right decision.
I'm Randy Nelson. Live at 1624 East Liberty Circle. My big problem with this whole project is that if everybody that has built in that neighborhood built with the understanding that that was going to be a residential area. For it to be an R3 after all these homes are established is just ridiculous. That should never happen. And I agree with everything that Brett and Steve have said here. It's totally out of line to put something like that in that area. And Redwood Boulevard, that is such a mess that there's been times when I couldn't even drive a tractor down that road. It's so rough. And I know you guys tried to push it through to annex that in. That would have cost me $300,000 the way you had it set up. I don't know what your plans are now. That's all got to come up in the future and it's got to be redone. And to put all these apartments over there is ridiculous. This should have never, ever gotten to this point. And that's, that's pretty much what I have to say. So, thank you.
Zach Auak, 1704 East Redwood Boulevard. There's not very many people here, but I'm extremely nervous. This is, this is my nightmare. Yeah, my name is Zach Auak. I moved to Brandon about two years ago with my wife and two children. When finding a new place to raise our family, we took our time. We did our research and we did not make our decision to move to Brandon lightly. We liked the idea of the small-town feel while being close to the bigger city amenities. We wanted space, privacy, security, and a good education system for our children. We moved to 1704 East Redwood. The lot's about two and a half acres and it's adjacent to the east property line of the proposed apartment complex. If we had any inclination that there was a chance that we'd be living next to an overcrowded apartment complex, we would have chosen not to purchase the property. We're strongly opposed to the rezoning of the property to R3, which would allow for high-density apartments. I found out about the potential apartments the day of the planning and zoning meeting on October 20th, when I saw someone putting up no trespassing signs on the property. At first, I thought they were putting up Realtor signs. After digging a little deeper, I found out what was going on and immediately started to take action. I started to walk, I started talking to my closest neighbors and posted on a Brandon community Facebook page. There were very few people who knew about the proposed rezoning and this did not surprise me. I lived next to the property, drive by multiple, multiple times a day and I had no clue. Shortly after I started a petition against the rezoning, I spent hours upon hours walking around the neighborhood, talking to people. "Hi, how are you? My name's Zach. I'm petitioning against the apartments they want to put over here." Most people gave me a funny look before they knew what to say. "What do you mean, apartments? I have no clue what you're talking about." These were the most common phrases that would follow. I showed them the preliminary design and gave them the stats the developer provided at the time. The idea of rezoning this property to R3 has angered the surrounding community, both people who have moved to Brandon recently and folks who have lived in the neighborhood for decades. As for the responsibility of the city of Brandon, the rezoning of the property was not in the city's comprehensive plan when many new people moved to this neighborhood. Why have a comprehensive plan if it's not followed? What is the purpose of planning? A comprehensive plan is used to lessen congestion in the streets, to secure safety from fire, panic, and other dangers, to promote health and the general welfare of the citizens, to prevent overcrowding of land, to avoid undue concentration of population, to facilitate the adequate provisions of transportation, water, and sewer, schools, parks, and other public requirements. A comprehensive plan shall be used with reasonable consideration, among other things, to the character of the district and its peculiar suitability for particular uses and with a view of conserving the value of the buildings while encouraging the most appropriate use of land within a municipality. Digging into this a little bit more, I'm just kind of breaking it down a little bit. It's used to lessen the congestion in the streets. Redwood Boulevard is half gravel, half asphalt. Little parking is allowed on the street is already taken up by the townhomes along Redwood Boulevard. The parking and traffic congestion is so bad that in order to drive up and down Redwood, you have to cross the center line to avoid hitting parked cars. The security, the next thing is the security, the security, the secure safety from fire, panic, and other dangers. This is a huge issue. With one, with one way in and one way out, what happens if there's crime, fire, or what we all know is going to happen, flooding? With only one entrance, it would be extremely irresponsible to allow anything other than R1 zoning status on this property. Not if, but when something happens. How are the people supposed to evacuate? We all know that the drainage channel that runs along the south portion of the property turns, what it turns into during even the lightest rains. It turns into a river. When kids are walking to the park, riding their bikes to school, or just doing what kids do, play in the rain, do we think for one second they won't be near the drainage channel that quickly turns into a raging river? Um, if there's a fire or there is an accident and that entrance is flooded, how is an ambulance or a policeman or a fire truck supposed to get there? The next thing would be to prevent the overcrowding of land and to avoid the undue concentration of population. This one speaks for itself. A private developer who is in, in it strictly for the money should not have a say in whether or not we need to change the entire neighborhood. Cramming in as many people as they can onto a piece of property, cashing in, and then moving on to the next one, while the rest of us have to deal with it for decades to come. The land was meant for residential homes, and it should stay that way. The comprehensive plan is used to facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, and sewer. In the developer's preliminary, preliminary design, they planned to build a lift station to pump the sewage to an elevation that it could then be taken away by gravity. Who would be in charge of this list, lift station? Who pays for the maintenance of the lift station after it's completed? Who's responsible for when it fails, and who would it affect? Can the existing sewer handle it? These are all questions that need to be answered.
Zach, I have four or five minutes.
I'm almost done, if that's okay. Um, lastly, to conserving the value of the buildings. Again, conserving the value of the buildings while encouraging the most appropriate use for land within the municipality. All of this was speaking on behalf of the people who signed the petition. While speaking to the people in the neighborhood, they would rarely have anything nice to say about the way the City of Brandon has been run lately. Comments such as, "Good luck, the city does what it wants", or "The city could care less what we all think." Most people, most everyone believes that a growing city is a good thing, but it needs to be done the right way. We all know these lots should retain the zoning status of R1. Show the people that you care about them, show the people that you're not all about the tax dollars. We will be using, you will be using our neighborhood as an example for the rest of the citizens, citizens of the City of Brandon. Show the people that you care, make the right choice, do not allow this to happen. Thank you.
Hello, Charlie Bigelow, six-oh-eight North Oak Ridge Road. And I was the only person from the neighborhood that was at the planning meeting. Uh, for some reason, I saw the sign and walked up there and I wanted to know what they were going to build. And I came basically for the information, at first, and then, um, you know, my concern was exactly like the other people's, the, you know, the, the amount of cars that are going to be parked on the parking lots. There are going to be anywhere between three and four hundred cars, more than likely, in that parking lot, and they have to exit this area, and this, the city, I don't think that street has been developed, uh, to the point where it can handle that. And so I think more, my biggest concern is the fact that North Oak Ridge Road comes out here, Riverwood Circle comes out here, and right dead smack in the middle is the exit for this development. With all the people exiting, you know, trying to go whatever direction they're going, and, you know, and the, and the traffic has increased a lot on Redwood Boulevard. If you, people are bypassing the, the main highway and coming around the backside and coming down on the gravel. And I think what I would like to see is this, if it needs to be looked at, studied at, and delayed, at least so that you know what the development looks like, you know how much property, how many people are going to live there, what those prop, properties are going to look like. And then, I think they need to have, do some kind of study on traffic. You know, how is the traffic is flowing, how people are moving around? Because I think, we all know that Redwood Boulevard is the main east-west corridor. And I think that's the issue that I'm most concerned about, is the traffic and the safety. And they're right, there are people parking on the street down at the end of Redwood Boulevard in it, in the morning and in the afternoon. It's hard to get by sometimes when there's cars parked on the street and you're pulling out and into the other lane. So I, my biggest concern is the safety and the traffic. And, and until that stuff gets settled, you know, I would not support this. I'd like to see that part of it get looked at, and I'd like to make sure that this plan fits in with what the city needs. And I'm not against high-density housing, that's not it. My, my son lives in an urban area and he's a landscape architect that does high-density, you know, high-density projects. And, but it just has to be done in a way that makes sense, that everybody can basically get on board, and it works for the community. And that's the people who live in our neighborhood. The community is our, our group that has to be, we have to at least have a better idea of what that looks like and how it's going to work. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm Shawna Murphy, and this is Michael Murphy. And Thor, we're at nine-seventeen North Freedom Circle. Um, I just, I'm, agree with everyone else that has spoken so far. Um, we're concerned about this rezoning to a R3 because it's bordering an R1. Um, the whole point of the zoning ordinance is to have the R1 to R2 to R3, so the R2 zoning is kind of acting as a buffer. And so these, you know, three-quarter of a million-dollar homes that are bordering this, uh, site that we're talking about aren't going to be backing up to three-story, you know, two-hundred apartment units. Um, we already have that commercial development on the north side of uh, the neighborhood there, and, uh, it's just when we, you know, purchased, developed, built those three, three-quarter of a million-dollar homes, that was definitely not something I had in mind. We're raising families, and I just don't feel comfortable having an R3 backing directly up to my cul-de-sac.
Hi, Michael. Um, I just want to elaborate on that a little bit. As, as you guys know, we're putting in the, the I-90 project, which is on the, the, the north side of our development, and then this is going to be on the south side. Um, this is a, a neighborhood that has tons of children in the streets at all times. My concern is a safety concern because we're going to have new fancy shops, you know, um, shopping centers, restaurants and stuff. My concern is trespassing through the lots to get to the, uh, the, um, the I-90 project there. Um, nobody, like Brett and all our neighbors that are here, we, they back right up to that, and I know for, for certain, um, I don't take kindly to people crossing through, through my, through my lot that I don't know, you know, so putting two-hundred families there is going to create also a safety risk for the neighborhood as well as a devaluation of one of your nicer neighborhoods in this, uh, community, so. I hope, I, I hope you can see the concerns neighbors here, like this is our whole neighborhood. The city, uh, we do not want this there, and I think you should take that in, into consideration, so. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to speak to this issue?
David Wurzbach, lived on, uh, six-one-six North Needles. I live on six-one-six North Needles. Um, I'm just gonna, I'm not going to waste you guys' time with repeating what these guys all said. We just moved there at the end of, end of July. Um, we're concerned with the traffic as well. In fact, I was just thinking about it while we were sitting here. I grew up uh, about a mile and a half straight east of there on Redwood, so it's not Redwood anymore, it's two-sixtieth, I believe it was. We're kids, we rode our bikes down to the, it was the old Ice Mountain where the chiropractor shop is at. You know? We rode our bikes to the P&amp;P gas station, which is now is the local. I have some, I have some nephews that live right up in that area in the new development where the old, uh, Berkman Farm was at. I would love nothing for them kids to ride their bikes down there. And there's no way in heck I'd let them do it right now. Um, the other thing is, is people might think that people have a, uh, problem with apartments. Before we moved here, we sold our house, we lived in an apartment for a year. It's what we had to do. Some people, that's just their, that's their life. We also witnessed a lot of the things that go on in apartments. Renters don't have the same regard of property as homeowners do. There was constantly trash flying around. There was a plastic fence, there was always holes in it, kids throwing rocks. And I'd just hate to see that in a new neighborhood. If I knew that this place was going up right, almost right across the street from me, I probably wouldn't be moving there. So, thanks for my time, thanks for your time. Thank you.
Is that it? Okay, good. My name's David Shelton, Century Twenty-One Advantage, um, and also um, the owner of the property, the subject property. Um, and, uh, with Redwood Ranch LLC. So, uh, with this rezoning, uh, we have a developer selected that has built in very, very environmentally sensitive areas. One project that's going on right now is in, uh, in Brookings, and it's in a conservation area. Much more sensitive, actually, than this area. Um, the buildings are, uh, proposed buildings are twelve-plexes. They look like beautiful, large homes. Um, most of the, uh, units will be one-bedroom or proposed to be one-bedroom, lots of open space, um, set back out of the flood area. Um, and the way that that topography works on that site, it slopes toward the south, has views toward the southeast, and, uh, is very attractive. There won't be any people backing up under Redwood, which I agree, that's, that's a, that's a tough, that's a tough deal. Um, um, they will be, they'll be on-site. Um, of course, we, we did some initial traffic analysis, what was available to us, um, for Redwood, and, uh, with the current traffic count, uh, my understanding was and is that, um, the city plans to expand and to grow and to, and to improve Redwood Boulevard. And that's been a, that's been thrown around for a while, so we would very much be in favor of that happening. Um, but I think it's going to be great for the neighborhood. We do have a public, uh, meeting that the people that were talking about receiving the letter, we, we did that as a, as a good practice, as a, as a, as a wise practice, inviting people to to Pizza Ranch this Thursday night that are neighbors, um, uh, to, uh, to, to view a video of what's proposed, and that video was just shot um, yesterday, and, uh, will be, will be there. Uh, it'll be distributed to the Council and Planning Commission as well. We're, we're being very, very careful about, um, this proposal. We understand the, the, the NIMBY kind of a thing, and, um, we are all homeowners. Don't want to see anything out of character or out of con, uh, context on this lot or anything else that we develop. Uh, but, but, um, this will be a value add to the area, the existing homeowners. Um, we're not asking to cut through the, uh, the current development to gain access and to cause more traffic that way. It's, we think we can handle it all responsibly, uh, and reasonably on the site. Take, we know, we're aware of the flood, uh, plain issues. Nothing's being built in that floodplain area that would be, um, adversely affected. Um, and with respect to covering that, uh, channel, um, we didn't know that there were any options, uh, to do that. We, we were basically told that that, that is as it is, and, and you can't mess with the, with the channel, so. Our, our initial thing was, let's put this, let's put this underground and, uh, and deal with it that way. But, uh, someone was very careful and thoughtful in engineering that in the first place, so, um, we, we respect that. And we respect the, the opinion and the concerns uh, of, of the neighboring property. Um, we're really, um, with the, with the creation of the video, looking at the, the site that's currently being developed, um, in Brookings, and, uh, and on that very, very sensitive conservation area, I think people will be, um, actually pleased, pleasantly surprised at, at what, uh, what we're proposing, and hopefully will get approved on this site. So, thank you much.
Okay. Anyone else?
Is it going? Jim Ryder, six-seventeen North Oak Ridge Road. I'm a little bit concerned about basically the traffic also. Um, I'm not opposed to apartments, but I live right on the corner of Redwood and Oak Ridge Road, and we also have the golf course down at the end of Red, Redwood Boulevard. And we've seen the traffic over the last thirty-three years that we've had the golf course there increase something fierce. And there's a lot of speeding on that road. And I, I've talked to the police before and asked them, "Go ahead and park in our driveway and stop them and show them that, yes, you're not supposed to be speeding on Redwood Boulevard." But that, that's one of the things I'm concerned about, is the traffic. I, I know that they talked years ago, a few years ago about redoing Redwood Boulevard. There, there's supposed to be a bike path there and widening it. I'd like to see that happen. Uh, because I walk to the golf course a lot. When it was a gravel road, I could throw rocks at the speeders as they drove by, but now I can't, but. It, it, I, I'd like to see that considered, but I also have a little concern about the future building that they're showing on this site plan. That happens to be right across from my house. And I'm not quite sure if that's a commercial building. It doesn't look like it. I don't know if you guys have seen it, there's a preliminary site plan here. It's just right there, right next to the apartments, or the duplexes, it says, uh, "Future Building." That's the thing I was a little bit concerned about also. Like I say, I'm not, I'm not opposed to the apartments, but I, I'd like to see a little more concern about that, the traffic on Redwood Boulevard. And also tell the police they can park down at our entrance anytime they want.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Anything, uh, with the council? We need to, uh, either vote to move this on to the final?
Well, you've got three choices. You can approve the first consideration, and then we go to the second consideration at the next council meeting. You can deny the application outright, or you could table the first consideration until such time as you want to bring it off the table.
Well, I generally follow, um, P&amp;Z's recommendations because they do spend a lot of time on this. Um, you may think that they just come in and make a hasty decision, but they do not. They really study it. But I, I will have to concur that I am concerned about the safety on the road. Folks, we don't have the money to fix Redwood. That is a township road. And until we have the money or the township steps up, that's going to continue to be the way it is. That's just, that's just the way it is. Folks didn't want to be annexed in, so that's the way it's going to be. So, let's assume that that's the way it's going to be for a while. How is the safety going to be with the school out there and with potential apartments? I think we should refer it back for a traffic study, I don't know if we can do that, um, to get a little bit more information in that area. Otherwise, I think it's a good use of, of property.
You, you know, I agree, this is, I guess, what, what this is all about, you know, watching a little bit of the, uh, the, the planning and zoning meeting from before when this happened, the fact that, you know, only one gentleman was able to make it. Uh, whether it be communication on, on, on our part, not letting people know, but ultimately, everybody knew, and, and here's what we have. And so it's awesome to see communication and the concerns that you guys have as neighbors. I'd be, obviously, with this many people voicing their concern, I'd be, I'd be cautious moving forward on this. Again, until we see more of, uh, of what it's going to look like, um, you know. Like Barb had said, there's, the, the plans for expanding the road there at Redwood is just, who knows when that's, what that's going to be, um. So I'm, I, I, my, my stake, I'm, I'm concerned moving forward on, uh, on this with the amount of concerns that we have from the people we're trying to protect here.
In order to table it for now, until we get more information, do we need a motion on this? I will make I will make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table this project until we have more information. And so, any other discussion?
Well, what more information would, would you like, I guess? When it comes to traffic studies, that will depend on how many units they build. When it comes to use of the property, if it's R3, we can build thirty-six units there, right? So, anything that happens is going to have to go through a conditional use hearing, which that is when every one of those questions gets answered. What's the traffic? What is the land use? What does it look like? What is it laid out like? That is an opportunity for the Planning and Zoning Commission to review their preliminary plans, say yes or no. So, before this, what more information, I guess, would you like?
I think we need to have information on if they go, go the full board, Tim, because what we found out in the past is sometimes the numbers don't work for the developers if they're not able to go to the maximum. And I don't know, Mr. Shelton, if that's the case in, in this respect, but looking at, I know it's conditional use, but we, we could go the two, whatever they're proposing, two hundred units. I, so I think we need to at least go partway to the two hundred, not just thirty-six.
That, and I think, I think, you know, we all, we're all seeing this, at least I'm seeing this on the council for the first time, and I know maybe some of the residents just saw something in the, in there as well. So, just getting our minds wrapped around. Obviously, Mr. Shelton is not planning thirty-six. He's planning more than, more than thirty-six. So, just getting, I feel like maybe this meeting should have happened a while ago that get everybody an idea, hey, this is what we're planning, and then we're going to go to the council or go to the P&amp;Z. So, maybe the cart's a little ahead of, of the horse here a little bit, and maybe just by taking a pause, everybody get their ducks in, the, the residents understand what's going, what's, what's, what they're trying to accomplish out there, and then everybody can make decisions from there.
I concur with the delay, and I, I would have some concerns over the one entrance with the number of properties that are, are going in here. I do think we need to change our notification. You know, the little signs that we do, I mentioned this Thursday night, I just, I don't think that they're, they're visible. I think that, that that's apparent by one person being at P&amp;Z and a roomful being here. So, I would like to see us do that. And I, I suppose the time of year isn't that great either with the political signs everywhere, but that would be a concern I would have. And then, I guess I would also like to know how we are going to address the concerns that were brought up, you know, with the sewer, the traffic, Redwood. So, I, I agree with waiting.
I guess my biggest concern would be traffic too. It's, school's going to happen, we know that. Traffic's going to increase, we know that. Right now, if you add thirty-six apartments, it's going to add traffic. So, anything you do is going to congest that area more. I'd say table it for now and get a better idea.
Mr. Shelton, a quick question. Are you, if we table this for right now, are you still planning on going ahead with the community meeting and with the video and the educational process?
We're, we're planning, so what we understood was that this meeting was step.
Yeah, probably.
Red lights on. Good, perfect. So, we, what we understood was, this is the first reading, first, first hearing, basically so that we can get to the fact discovery meeting, which was, I think Mr. Jorgensen was alluding to that. So, the appropriate manner in which, in which this is done. We've, we've, we've taken the proper steps. This has been two years of, of looking hard at this site, finding the right developer, right sensitivities. There were, there were plans from others that were coming that were looking at massive buildings and all that. This is super scaled down and very, very attractive, will add value to the city. But, but the first hearing, I, I would, I would request that it would be yes or, or no. And then, when we have that second hearing, a lot's got to happen in the middle. And that's where we, where we, where we nail all those things down. And if it's not viable, if, if the, if the traffic study's not going to, to work, if those things, we, we understand that we've, we've talked about the sewer, and we're, we're prepared to deal with that, and the lift station, and to pay that freight. There's twelve thousand in, in property taxes being collected now on the property. That'll go to about four hundred thousand dollars, and I'm sure that that'll help the township in the process of improving that road. There's a school being planned, and you need infrastructure to be able to, to be able to improve this stuff. And this is really a great opportunity for the community to come together and, and look for ways to just, to embrace it, if it's embraceable. And if it isn't, then, but I would say, do this tonight, and then let's get on with the other stuff. We've got a, we've got a public hearings. We, we've got, we've invited everybody to dinner at Pizza Ranch, right? There are all the neighbors, so that we can look at these things. And, and we're not there to, we're there to hear, we're there to listen and participate, and that's, that's, and have a dialogue. So, yeah. Did I answer your question?
Sure. I have lots of stuff. First of all, I'm, what would you propose? Bigger signs? How big? We have never, as the city required, mailed notification. We, as a planning and zoning, actually changed that a few months ago for conditional uses and for variances. We actually have something on the books to redo it for rezones. We didn't previously, and they can say that better, because it has something to do with an amendment, I believe. So, it would require them to go out to everybody without some language stating otherwise. I do believe everybody around us uses the exact same signs we do when it comes to conditional uses, variances, rezones. In fact, I drove by one on the Cloverleaf on 229 that was out in the middle of the field for a rezone in Sioux Falls. So, that, that hasn't changed. You know, there was a, P&amp;Z years ago recommended that they don't build houses on the south side of this road in the flood plain. Council didn't listen to them. And now we've sandbagged those houses, what, twenty times? Former councils voted to do things like rebuild Sylvan Circle and chose not to put sidewalks in. So, you know, P&amp;Z made this recommendation to go to R3. They didn't make a recommendation to build two hundred units. They made a recommendation to go to R3. So, I guess I would, since I sat in the meeting, I would tend to listen to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Any other discussion? No, excuse me. We're done with that.
Are we?
This is council discussion now.
Is this getting pressed to a decision now or not now?
We have a motion and a second.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to table this issue until further notice. All in favor, say aye.
Hold on. So, if we table it, what are we asking? Are we sending it back to P&amp;Z? What are we asking for?
That wasn't in the motion. Any other discussion? We have a motion to table this issue until further notice. All in favor, say aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Roll call?
Roll call. Clark?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Er, Nate, sorry.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Steen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, so going back to that, can we go back to that now?
Sure. We should talk about this a little more.
Yeah, I mean, the reason I voted nay is because we didn't have a plan as to how we were going to bring it back. It, it needs to come back. I don't know what that process is. That's developer land. We need housing. Just because it is zoned R1, when you move in, does not mean that it will always be R1. I'm sorry, but land zoning can change, and unless you move in and there's housing all around you, it can change. So, it may, may come back up again.
Okay, first reading of ordinance six sixty-six. You've heard Patrick's comments.
This is a really good move by P&amp;Z. They worked really hard on it. I think it was actually Tim's idea. Patrick took it and ran, and I appreciate all the work they did on it. I would make a motion for first reading, Mayor.
Motion and a second to approve the first reading of six sixty-six. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Number three, first reading of ordinance.
Where do I hand in petitions?
First reading of ordinance six sixty-seven. Motion and a second to approve. Okay. That's a good catch. Any comments from the public? On motion six sixty-seven. Hearing done, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Number four is the first reading of, of ordinance six sixty-eight. Any public discussion? Motion and a second to approve the ordinance six sixty-eight. Any further discussion by the council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Number five is, is the ordinance six sixty-nine. Any comments from the general public? Any comments from the council?
Motion approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve ordinance six sixty-nine. Any further comments? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Number six is the first reading of ordinance six seventy. Any comments from the public? Any comment from the council?
Motion approve.
Motion and a second to approve the first reading of ordinance six seventy. Any further comments by the council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Number seven is the first reading of ordinance six seventy-one. Any comments from the general public? Comments from the council?
Motion approve.
Motion and a second to approve ordinance six seventy-one. Any further discussion by the council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. First reading of ordinance six seventy-two. Any public comments? Council comments?
Yes, I'd like to address this one. So, again, this is P&amp;Z coming up with some creative thinking out of the box. It's a way to develop some land, get it into the city limits, but because we can't service it sewer-wise, it allows that to happen. And so, again, it's spreading our footprint a, a bit, which is important for us to continue to do. And I want to commend City Council again. Tim is the out-of-the-box thinker on this stuff, and council jostles with him, and they come up with some really good solutions. So, for those of you that haven't been to a meeting or watched it on TV, it's an interesting process, and they take this very seriously. I really appreciate the work they do, and they are volunteers. You're welcome. I would make a motion to approve.
Motion and a second to approve ordinance six seventy-two. Any further council discussion?
Oh, yes, and we need to thank Patrick. He has put all of this stuff together. He has been working like a demon. So, Patrick, you've done a really nice job. Appreciate your help.
Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Number nine is the first reading of ordinance six seventy-three. Any public comments? Any council comments?
This one I would also like to thank Patrick on, because he brought this one up. This is to try to eliminate the seas of parking that you see around a lot of retail and commercial centers that ninety percent go unused. So, this is a, this is a kind of a creative way to come up with, maybe cutting those numbers down, maybe adding two or three businesses instead of fifty more parking spots. So, nice job, man. On that, I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion and a second to approve ordinance six seventy-three. Any further discussion by the council? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Number ten is the liquor license renewals. You see the list on your, on your agenda. I understand that maybe someone from Tailgaters was going to be here. Come on up.
Zach Bolter. So, we had a violation for the sting that we failed two weeks ago. So, we were asked to appear here before you guys tonight.
Corrective action that you've taken?
The bartender who did serve the underage person has been put on leave as of now. Her court hearing is tomorrow for her punishment. We have done more training and stuff with our servers and everybody, and bartenders who serve alcohol, explain the differences between the over twenty-one-year-old IDs, the under twenty-one-year-old IDs, and the importance of ID'ing people and the, you know, possibilities of the fine, of losing jobs, of affecting a business, so.
I'm okay if I'm ID'd anytime I come in.
Sounds good, David.
I'm not offended.
I'm not either.
Okay, any other questions?
This, maybe just for my own information, but, and maybe it's for Lisa to explain to me, when a violation occurs like this, what repercussions do we have as a council in dealing with it when it comes to liquor license renewals? And why is the server going to court?
So, the server can face criminal penalties because, yes, so the, the server has a criminal violation that he or she is facing charges for. And then, we have the ability to grant and deny liquor licenses, make recommendations to the state that also hold it. So, typically, our process has been if somebody violates the state law on serving, that we have them come here and make sure that we're comfortable in continuing to make the recommendation that the establishment have the license.
Thanks, Lisa. Any other comments or questions for Zach? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I understand we also have someone from the Gruff.
Erica Richards. Again, we also had a violation. With us only being open a little over a month, it doesn't look good. We don't take it lightly. We've been in Sioux Falls at the attic fifteen years. We haven't had a violation. So, to be open a month and a half, pretty disappointing. When we opened, we train, we have in our handbook that everybody gets alcohol responsibility, carding everybody under the age of forty, all the required stuff. I don't know what happened, to speak to that person. But just ongoing, what we are going to do to move forward, just be, well, immediately, everybody got these, went down as a group. We did use that employee. We kept him on, but we chose to use him as an example. He was very remorseful. The staff, you know, he can help educate. We can all work together on this. Anyway, that being said, we have signs hung up in our survey areas with under twenty-one- um, we have signs hung up in our survey areas, um, with under twenty-one, over twenty-one IDs, alcohol compliance quizzes, not just when they start, but ongoing. It's just, it never hurts to help. We have posted the legal drink by date multiple places in our facility. And all that.
Okay, any questions?
Can you just re- repeat your name?
Erica Richards.
Okay, Erica, thank you. Okay, you guys have the list? Motion and second to approve the, uh, liquor license renewals in Brandon. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. There is no old business, so we'll move on to standing committee reports, starting with the golf course. We have retaining wall project. Where are we at?
Uh, retaining wall project is going really well. They have that first retaining wall poured and up and backfilled. There was a little bit extra excavation that we weren't originally counting for. GeoTech is our construction materials contractor that's out there doing the inspection on that, and they asked for more excavation. So part of that first change order is twenty thousand dollars for that excavation. Um, the second part of that change order is about a little over twenty-five thousand for extra tree removal. If you've been out there, you know that there's a lot of very large trees. And the slope is really, is pretty steep, and so it's a lot easier for the contractor to do that work than it is our own city staff. So that first change order is for forty-five thousand nineteen dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Okay, any other questions for the engineer? I'll look for a motion on change order number one. Motion and second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We also have pay application, page seventy-six to eighty-three.
Yep, and their first pay application is just over four hundred and fifty thousand.
Motion and second to approve the pay application. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Parks and Rec. Got the park report on page eighty-four. Tennis court lights, this is a discussion item only. Um, really don't have a lot to discuss at this point. You know, the, the process will be to look at this and make a plan for spring.
Correct. Adam Rothenberger, Park and, Park and Rec Board member, is contacting or talking with the school and the tennis association about the cost estimate to install new LED lights with controls.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to clarify, the young gentleman that was here, I don't believe that the timeframe he mentioned he had concerns with has anything to do with what we're trying to accomplish, correct? Because he was referencing.
Spring.
He, he was referencing that, uh, we've turned them off for the fall. And I don't know if he didn't realize that we do that. It's what we do every year, and I advise them of that, so.
Okay, we have the twenty-twenty-three pool fees on page eighty-seven to eighty-nine. This is a discussion item also. We don't really need to.
Just direction, um, on these fees up and coming here, um, on what you would like to do, because I'll create the resolution for the next meeting if we want to increase the rates, so. Uh, the pool fees, we did increase them in twenty-twenty-one when, when, when we did the improvements down at the pool. We have seen an increase in payroll, uh, this year due to increasing, uh, minimum wages due to Sioux Falls increasing theirs. So to kind of keep our employees, we did have to kind of match or close to match where Sioux Falls was at. So I did put in there that payroll in twenty-twenty-one was about a hundred and twenty thousand, and it went up to a hundred and eighty-seven thousand this year. Just so you're aware of that on kind of where we're at. And then on page eighty-nine is kind of the O and M over the last three years on where we're at with the pool.
Uh, Park Board recommends that we leave the pool fees as is for this coming season. Make a motion to that effect.
We don't need a motion at this point.
Oh, oh, you have to do the resolution, okay.
What, uh, did we lose money? I assume we did.
Yeah, pools always lose money. Typically, we're around that a hundred thousand-ish range. This year, we're at about a hundred and sixty-five thousand. But yeah, they.
How do we, how do we compete with other communities as far as rates are concerned?
Um, Sioux Falls, I know, like, their summer rate, so I would, I think it includes their indoor pool, but it's like their summertime rate that I would, that we would compare to. Their family's a hundred, and we're at a hundred, so comparable.
All right, we'll come up with an ordinance and we'll deal with it. Yes.
I just had a quick question. So memberships were like nine seventy-three in twenty-twenty-one, and then they went to seven fifty-six in twenty-twenty-two. Do you think that was a large part due to, we're still in the midst of the pandemic, people are looking for things to do outdoors, or why we?
Some of it, some of it's the teachers', um, memberships as well that were in there in twenty-twenty-one, but, um, it's hard to say.
Also in twenty-one, you know, Sioux Falls had half its pools closed because they couldn't staff them. So, um, do we know if we increase the rates, like, what can we lessen the loss to? It's a good, it's a good thing this isn't an enterprise fund.
Well, I mean, quickly, if we're looking at seven hundred and fifty, eight hundred memberships, family memberships, you know, at a hundred dollars apiece, you raise those ten dollars, you're going to raise about eight thousand dollars.
It's a. It's an amenity, Tim.
Yeah, they're not all family, so. Take that with a grain of salt, but, you know, it could be certainly less than ten thousand dollars if you raised it ten percent.
Okay.
So although it's nominal, I still think that, you know, everything has gone up, absolutely everything. And our payroll's gone up fifty-six percent, and our loss is up to a hundred and sixty-five thousand. Some of it's the, just being a good steward of our tax dollars, and if we're having this kind of increase and we're just passing it to the entire city rather than the people that use the pool, I don't know that that's the right message. I mean, if it was twenty dollars per hundred dollar, um, membership, that's twenty thousand dollars. I mean, that could go towards the potential, uh, portion of the tennis court lights that the city maybe has to pay. I mean, I, I, I think just covering it because it's nominal isn't the right thing. I, I think it should be raised. But if I'm in the minority, that's fine.
Well, again, uh, we're going back to, Park Board has discussed it. They deal with this all the time. And if we're going to second-guess our boards all the time, I don't think that's a good use of anybody's time, and we're going to lose our boards. So they've discussed it. I'm going to go along with what they have said, because we did raise it in, when did we raise it, Christina? Twenty-one. So, you know, people are getting hit all over with inflation. We didn't feel like we wanted to do that to them.
Well, I guess I have a question on that, because I did listen to the audio today, and when this topic first came up, Devin had said that he didn't have the information. Christina was out that day. So I don't know that Park Board actually saw that we were a hundred and sixty-five thousand in the hole. The packet doesn't reflect that they saw that. So I don't know that they necessarily had all that information.
Um, I gave you the payroll. They have the payroll numbers, but I did not have.
They didn't have the, the loss.
They have the payroll difference.
So I don't know that they had all the information, and I just, I don't know that it's, I don't know. It's our, it's our job to spend the taxpayer dollars and make these decisions.
Any other discussion? I'd say staff make a recommendation. When we get to it.
We, uh, Park Committee's going to meet again on the sixteen.
Okay.
So we can certainly provide them with that information at that point in time, and that would be in time for the meeting on the twenty-first.
Perfect. Anything else? Uh, we have a tractor purchase. We do need a motion on this, page ninety and ninety-one. Motion and second to purchase the, uh, to approve the tractor purchase. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Aspen Park, uh, grading quote, ninety-two and ninety-four. We need a motion on this as well. Motion and a second to approve the, uh, grading quote. Any further discussion?
So if you've been down to Aspen Park, you know that we have quite a bit of dirt down there that we've been stockpiling from other various projects. And so now we have enough dirt there to at least do the RC track in part of the south end of Aspen Park. So this is just a proposal with Sioux Cop and, or Sioux Cop Construction to do some of that grading work so that the RC track can move down there.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Public safety, we have a police report on page ninety-five to ninety-seven. I don't, I'm not sure what the inspection report.
Yeah, that's just ongoing projects that the inspection department's working on.
Okay. And we have a new police officer to hire.
Well, uh, we're making a recommendation that we hire a gentleman, Andrew Maslowski, as a full-time, non-certified officer, beginning November twenty-first, and right now he is scheduled to go to the academy class towards the end of November, hopefully in Sioux Falls.
Motion and second to approve the hiring of the new police officer, Andrew.
Maslow.
Maslowski. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Building permit, uh, valuations. For discussion.
Uh, yeah, another fee that we look at each year. We started last year using the August ICC numbers for building square foot valuations. They did go up twelve percent over last year, so we're recommending that we increase the building square foot value twelve percent. On number, page one oh-two is the numbers that we go off of, so. Okay with that, we'd make a resolution for next meeting.
All right.
Reflecting that.
Uh, contract for, uh, printer at the police department. We need a motion on that. Motion and second to approve the, uh, printer for the, uh, police department. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Administration, communications report on page one oh-four to one oh-five. Um, we do have a resolution thirty dash thirty, twenty-two transferring.
Yeah, resolution transferring contingency funds. Contingency funds are aligned on, in the budget, so it doesn't use, um, surplus money. It's, um, a number in the budget that we can put in there, and we do and try to utilize that. There's four different items that we're going to move that for. Um, currently, the contingency fund has a hundred thousand dollars in there. So what I'm proposing is, uh, recreation wages are a little over budget. Pool is over budget due to, um, some discussions we just had on the increase in wages. And then pool improvements, we are waiting on a final payout for the, the project that we started in twenty-twenty. So it's, um, that should hopefully be coming. And then core area one was the final payout for that as well for ten, so the total is forty-one thousand three hundred dollars.
Looking for a motion? Motion and second to approve the, uh, transferring from the contingency fund. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Streets. Work report on page one oh-eight. We do have a transit management agreement with, uh, ROCs found on page one oh-nine to one twenty-one. This one will require a motion. Motion and second to approve that management agreement. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And we have the, uh, purchase of a pickup plow on page one twenty-two. We'll look for a motion on that. Motion and second to approve the, um, purchase of the pickup plow. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Rushmore Phase Two. Um, advertisement for bids. Looking for a motion? Motion and second to approve the advertisement for bids on Rushmore Phase Two. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Exit four oh-six transportation alternative grant application on page one twenty-four. Looking for a motion?
This, this is just for informational purposes. So for our exit four oh-six interchange, um, the DOT is working on the design of that project, and they are applying for TAP funds. Since it is within city limits, they would expect us to take it over as far as maintenance and removing snow and that sort of thing. And so we would be that cosponsor of it. Uh, they were very short on their, uh, deadlines, and so I did go ahead and sign it and sent it in since they're not asking for a cost share for us.
So we'll approve this after the fact. Okay.
It's one of those items we're just waiting on the exit four oh-six.
Can't remember, did we have a motion? I think we do. We have a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay, Water and Sewer Department. Eastside Sewer Main. Agreement with the.
We received, uh, ARPA grant from, uh, the state for four hundred and seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars for the east side trunk line that would go up from Bethany Lift Station north to approximately Redwood to serve the new school addition.
So this is really going to help open up the east side for us, so it's, um, really nice to get this grant.
Looking for a motion? Motion and second to, uh, approve the, uh, ARPA agreement. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Proposed, uh, twenty-twenty-three water sewer and street light rates. This is a discussion item.
Water rates, um, as we have, probably, hopefully already know, because we've talked about it several times, but the water treatment plant surcharge bond, when we took out that bond, there was a requirement in there that we do a surcharge to the bills. That surcharge starts, um, January first, twenty-twenty-three. Most residents, one-inch meter and smaller, or most residential homes will see a, a monthly charge of twenty-eight twenty on their bill. So when we're talking about water rates for your tiers and base rate, what I'm recommending is base, we actually do a zero percent. In tier one, we actually do a zero percent increase. Help a little bit. It's not going to help at all with the twenty-eight twenty that's being added on, but hopefully it can help out some. Tier two, three percent, or tier two, yeah, three percent, tier three, five percent, and tier four, ten percent. Ten fours, you know, or tier fours, you know, is usually your, um, excessive water, water users. So we have increased that, you know, around that ten percent the last couple of years to, so people aren't watering excessively.
Okay. We have no other new business, so, uh, we will need an executive session, so all in.
Sewer rates too.
Oh, excuse me.
Sewer and light rates.
Sewer.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, sewer rates, just looking at a three percent base, three percent volume charge. So the average, average resident at six thousand gallons, um, would see about two dollars and fifty-seven cent increase on their monthly bill. I would say for sewer, average is probably lower than that, but that's kind of the gallons that we use. Streetlights, um, also three percent, so we're moving from six thousand and eighteen, six thousand and eighteen cents to six thousand and thirty-seven cents, so the average resident will see nineteen cent increase on their streetlight bill. So unless you have any questions, that's what I'll create the resolutions for next time, um, to do those increases. So unless you have any questions, that's what I'll create the resolutions for next time to do those increases.
Okay. Do we have a motion to go into executive session? Motion in a second to go into executive session. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all for being here.